Next case in front of the board, application CD Nash 29-12. Ford 24 Westminster Avenue, Streetlight Mission.
Again, Stephen Hale from County Hall, sending the application Streetlight Mission. We're here to see you for this board to seeking these areas and subdivisions, bolted areas, and next year with Streetlight Mission. You'll hear much more about Streetlight Mission, but it is a faith, Elizabeth-based, faith-based community outreach center. What we're looking to do is to take the old convent from Matthew of Conception Church and convert it for use by Streetlight Mission. The convent is at Presley Convent, and we have an end that will retrofit that building for use in providing needy people with clothing and food and other necessities. We've had opportunity to view the department of commons, particularly that as part of its almost unhaving upon applying many of those terms and conditions. We're going to have a representative of Streetlight Mission address the board this evening. We're also going to have our site engineer address the site issues. We'll have our architect look at the renovations that are being made to the building. And finally, our professional planner will address the use and bolted areas associated with the application. We'll go over to our presentation this evening, renovation of this building. So if there's no preliminary questions, I'd first like to call upon Karen Ushant, who seems to be right, and is very excited to be here this evening. Karen, you want to answer this?
Stand up, please. Karen, you want to join us to quote just on this grid, the testimony you're giving in this matter, what is the truth, the whole truth that I'm about to do? Karen, come in.
Anthony Delmoreto from the 20th, in order to marry you, he's a commander of Jersey.
Your name and address, if you'd like to.
Karen Ushant, Y U S C H A K. My address is 20 Fanklin Place, Elizabeth, Jersey.
Please reply for the whole background of Streetlight Mission.
Sure. First of all, I'm the president and the chief executive officer of the mission. My husband Paul and I have been helping out in the streets of Elizabeth for the past 15 years. In 2004, we moved our family to Elizabeth because we felt that in order to make change and really bring the fellow, we had to be part of the community. We founded Streetlight Mission in 2008 to expand the services we were already providing to those in need. We currently rent a 2,500 square foot property at 1181 East Broad Street, here in Elizabeth. The current facility restricts our services and is not handicap accessible. It does not meet the demands for the services. It is our goal at Streetlight to help those in need become positive contributing members of their families in communities in which we live. Last year, we served more than 2,000 families in need, 85% of which were Elizabeth residents. Each day, we have people who are struggling with poverty, substance abuse, physical and verbal abuse, mental illness, and most of all, hopelessness. The majority of these people, we start helping by providing food, physical amenities like groceries, clothing, toiletries, shoes, coats, school supplies. Through these services, we earn the trust of people and then help them with the more difficult challenges they face, such as substance abuse and unemployment. We also work with children. It's our role to help each child become the person that they were created to be. Many of our children don't think that they're going to live past the age of 18, so they can drop out of school. Which only perpetuates the problem of poverty and brings a cycle of generational poverty. We also provide relief for hurricane Sandy, both within hurricane Sandy, for victims of that, distributed to not only Elizabeth, but throughout the county. Food, shelter, blankets, and then also, which you can even further to Staten Island and the shorter New Jersey. It's our role to help people rebuild their lives.
How is this location?
Actually, I've been rehacked from this location. So I've been into this project and to be successful. The reason is why we built Streetlight Mission is because it's so centrally located. The majority of the people that we serve do not have transportation, so they either walk or they rely on electric transportation. The Westminster address is about a block from the bus line, the bus stop, and it's a short block, a flat, two per the train station in Elizabeth.
Karen, any further? Just highlight a couple of organizations, Karen.
Sure. Well, we believe that nobody joins the community by all of the services and we don't have the names within the community. So we've worked to establish a new coalition of community counties, working with community through many, and partnered with community agencies across the county. We've helped establish the ministry recovery for recovery treatment. We are members of the Association of Hospital Rescues. In fact, I'm a board member of that. That's a North American organization of 225 missions across North America that help the community. There's many other organizations, but I don't know.
Karen, you can move forward.
Sure. Currently, we're open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays providing food. Currently, we give 10 to 12. We also have some community meetings, providing very support. Right now, in the meeting, the mission, we have 45 women and their children there, most of which are single moms, who are being educated in everything from home coupon to shop, get more for your dollar, as well as some of the emotional needs that they're going through. In the new building, we'll expand that. We anticipate being open five days a week, probably nine to five Saturdays. Our Saturday hours are important because many of the working poor can't get access to the additional services they need during the week, so that's important. In the evening hours, we will be providing advanced education, GRE support, recovery support meetings.
And how many employees?
Currently, we have four paid employees. We usually have two to three people who work with us on job work programs through work experience. It's our role to help them learn the proper skills in the state environment through case management that's available, and then for them to become successful and see employment elsewhere. We also have people that are assigned to the boards to help get them back on track, getting to or through people at the turn, and then we have a balance of people there that are volunteers.
And how many work with your board? Karen, you're working on a site that's beautiful. Is that something you can add to the needs?
Yes, currently anticipated it will be eight spots. Many of the people that we serve, actually, the majority of the people we serve do not have a car. They come to us, as I said, by public transportation or walking. Even the people that are responding to the intern programs and through courts, they don't have cars, so the eight spots should be more than sufficient. The proposal, they've actually had some level on the drawings.
And my favorite draft that was on the strike, building renovation, proceed briefly, given present conditions of building one and two, private renovation.
Well, let's say, I like to use the analogy of we're going to do with, to this building, what we like to do and help people with. The building currently, right now, has major holes in the roof. The leaking goes not only through the second floor, but all the way to the bottom floor. There's a large new tarp that's taped to the top of it, and right now, it's trying to prevent further damaging. The inside copper pipes have been ripped out by squatters, probably purchased drugs. The heating systems and plumbing systems are not working. We basically are purchasing a shell.
And you plan substantial renovations?
Yes.
And you have any reviews, review, whether you're a professional or a detail, having a proper plan?
Absolutely not. It's very important for me, being a resident of this community and actually of that neighborhood, that this building reflects beautiful aesthetics, both inside and out. In order to help people recover and have hope, they need to see the environment now then. So you'll see a design of outstanding team of professionals that make not only a beautiful exterior of the building, but also a lean chair.
Thank you. I have a question. Commissioner Gasson?
I'm trying to figure out. I would like to direct you to rendering SP 21 to this. That's the second page on the page. Ready?
Okay.
I'm looking at the fence details. You have two types of fences. I'm trying to figure out where goes the lining fence, and where goes the other one of the fence.
Do you want to?
Yeah, so the site engineer will be up next generally, West Coast is on the frontage, it's a decorative fence, and then the other area is what happened.
Can I add to that? Eric and I have made some modifications on the level of beautiful fences, so we're going to use the, we're going to use the same ornamental fence that's already used in the property down the street. The area on the front, right where the lawn is, would have your ornamental. Beyond that, in its driveway, and so that would come a border board continuing around to the front of the building, have the ornamental. And the full side where the driveway is, would have the ornamental fence. Only in the areas that are ice stores and are, secondly, are going to do a better job with this. Ice stores with your, and it's really us preventing from seeing the driveway and stuff. We have a skathed patio. What was it? I'm sorry. Okay. The, we have a beautiful patio area there that's going to have pots and everything. So because that is right out of the driveway, and that area is, we want, we're going to make some visiting from the front. Everything from the front, we have a beautiful ornamental fence.
You have a lot of requirements, Karen? We have, site engineer coming up next, hopefully takes through, ready for the next. Okay, I have another question, Mr. Paul, thank you. Commissioners, any digital questions? I have two questions. Questions started in one way or one manner?
We receive funding through four primary ways. Individuals, we fund through grants and foundations. Individuals, grants and foundations, other businesses, like corporations and grants, and a very small amount through government funding.
Okay. Second question is, Church of Matthew of Conception, what part did it play with your mission?
None. The only owner of the building.
I see. Thank you.
They do have a number of parishioners that I believe will make use and probably already are making use of our services. So our services are limited to anybody who needs help.
Thank you. There is a representative in church here with questions. I'd like to ask a question for our site engineer. Could you raise your right hand before you sit down and you solemnly swear the testimony you're giving, that we do so. Have a seat, please, pay your name, tell your name and your address.
I'm a fellow student, I'm named Logan, 12th Street, New Jersey.
So maybe you can take the mic out of the speaker. Okay. If you could please give your engineer your medical credentials, so you have the police license to be held, and you testify with the intent that for your questions.
Certainly. Civil engineer, I have a degree. Civil environmental engineer from Cornell University, worked for land associates in the park for 10 years, and I'm licensed professional here in New Jersey and New York. I have experience in sports in New Jersey.
This is it. Thank you very much. Could you give a first analysis of existing conditions at the site, and then, on West Coast, are they approved, if you mind, from questions that were raised in the past?
I would have an open plan as well, and then, before that, the second name, the micro post.
And when you heard the plans, if they're merely mounted versions of the plans that were submitted to the board, they may not be part of the mission set, so if they are identified with the application?
Certainly. These are all thousand and forty seven, that's exactly as we're submitting to the board. I'm making reference to sheet SP 21, which is the survey, only because this subdivision plan shows the entire lot. The lot is Block 11, Lot 1609, and it comprises 2 and 1/2 acres, fronting on both Union Ave and Westminster. The lot is in two different zones as well, both residential R1 and R3. The proposal is to subdivide off only the portion on Westminster containing this existing building, which, as you previously heard, was the convent of the church, and is now vacant too. The area to be subdivided off is approximately 0.38 acres, leaving 2.13 acres for the church. I'll now refer to sheet SP 21, which is a blow up of the Westminster Avenue lot. The proposal is to add several building additions, which are architect detail and a little bit more detailed, but additions on all sides of the building, except for the front. We're proposing fencing, and I'll detail that now. As Karen said earlier, we are proposing a minor change to what was proposed on the plan. We originally proposed a vinyl solid fence along the side of the property, whereas now, we actually like to continue the ornamental fence, starting at the patio, moving forward along the street line and along the entire left-hand portion of the property, and then the vinyl solid fence will be at the rear of the lot, and also at the side of the lot where it fronts the neighborhood driveway. Also proposed on the lot are a number of sidewalks and 11 parking spaces. It is a small lot, and we've done our best to fit as many parking spaces as possible onto it, knowing that we are technically in a various condition. But the park would be a subject. We're proposing at this location, as an automobile were to pull off the road, this area they could pull into at any time. The fence would have closed the remainder of the lot for security reasons, so these two spaces in front, we would designate as visitor park, because they wouldn't have to go through the fence. Everything beyond there could be controlled. The landscaping lighting proposed, I'll direct you to landscaping plan. Without much real estate to work with, we've done our best working with our landscape architects to provide a nice looking landscape plan. We're proposing 66 shrubs and 23 flowering plants, located largely in the very front of the property along the street line, and also a variety of planting beds around the lot. The proposed lighting is shown on sheet SP 22. It includes three full mounted lights and two fully mounted lights, all down facing lights to minimize blaring, and the properties will still provide reasonable lighting for security of the site. The parking was analyzed for both lots, because there is a small amount of parking that was used by the church in this area that would be cut off by the subdivision that's totaled three spaces. The church, by your ordinance, requires 84 spaces, 103 were existing, and 100 are now proposed, both within your ordinance. For street lighting, it was a much more challenging analysis, what would be the variety of different activities go on in the building, and we analyzed it as such. A small residential area was requiring three spaces. The office area required 15 spaces, and then we considered a lot of the area and building community space, which required eight spaces, to a total of 27 spaces. And we're only proposing 11. As Karen mentioned earlier, the nature of what goes on at the site just does not limit itself to requiring 27 spaces. The mission believes that eight would be their requirement, we're proposing 11, one of them in handicap.
Now, can you please list the few issues that I would appreciate, just my.
Certainly. I'll go through the, I have a letter from our consultants. The first item I'll discuss is the design waivers request. The first design waiver is for parking setback from moving property line to this small structure. Three feet is required, we're proposing zero in two locations. One, at the rear of the lot here, would be a zero setback to the rear property line. You'll notice that the real property line is a parking lot, so we felt that a buffer from a parking lot to a parking lot was not entirely necessary, so we're asking for that waiver for zero for the buffer there. There is also a fence there, so that provides a better public. While we're at the location, I'll mention the dumpster that I forgot to mention earlier, we are proposing the dumpster closure at the rear of the lot. That would be enclosed with a one-on-one fence material that would match the adjacent one-on-one fence in that location. So with a six-foot fence in that location, the dumpster shouldn't be visible from either street or property line. Back to the parking, the other would be a zero foot buffer to the building. Because we're very limited in the side of the building space, we've shown parking right budgeted building, only because we didn't have any choice, given the small distance between the building and the property line. The next item I'll discuss is the required front setback for parking. This is referencing this one parking space right here, one of our two proposed parking spaces for visitors. The requirement is 10 feet from the street line, and we're proposing only three feet, 3.1, from the property line to that space. We're proposing mitigate that by the landscaping, we're showing that area, which is, this area is heavily landscaped, through the space closest to the front property line and sidewalk, so we felt in the interest of maximizing the parking and allowing that as well. The variances in item number three of the heart consultant's letter, I'll go back to All the variances for what we're referring to as Lot 1609.1, which is what the variance is, on what we're referring to as Lot 16.01, which is the remainder of the lot, which contains the church, all of these variances are existing conditions that we're not proposing to exacerbate. I'll go through them one by one. The prevailing front yard setback, 21, where the existing is 8.9, which is right here. The prevailing rear building setback is 59.4, whereas the existing rear is 288.7, which is from the front setback to the back of this building. We're not proposing to change that. The prevailing left side yard for the neighborhood is 10.6, where our existing left is 3.3 at this location. The permitted building height is 35 feet, whereas existing building is greater than 35 feet, in the church building. Didn't measure it, but it's greater than 35 feet. The maximum permitted fence height in the front yard is three feet, whereas existing fence is six feet. That's this fence right here. Again, we're not proposing any changes to that portion of the lot.
Those are all on the church?
Yes, those are all on the church portion of the lot. Next, I'll move on to Lot 16.09.02, which is the Westminster Ave lot, as we're referring to it. The prevailing rear building setback is 80.6, whereas the existing rear building setback is 144.9. Sorry, that's not existing, that's actually a proposed addition, because we are proposing an addition of rear building. The prevailing right side yard setback is 8.7, whereas the existing and proposed right yard setback is 6.2. That's in this location right here. The existing variance condition, we're proposing to expand, but not exacerbate, and not make it worse. Next is the fence, the maximum permitted fence height in the front yard is 20 feet, we're proposing a six-foot fence, a decorative fence. Maximum number of signs is one in a residential zone, we're showing two. We'll see those signs in architectural plans. Maximum signed area in the residential zone is six square feet, whereas 20 feet is proposed on the front facade, 13.2 square feet is proposed on the left building facade, again, as we showed in architectural plans. And the required number of parking spaces is 27, while 11 is proposed. Moving on to the general comments, I'll touch on the site related comments. Landscaping lighting has been acceptable. Refuse and recycling, I did discuss, in this area, can be closed with a vinyl six-foot fence. The accessible route from the handicap parking spaces, we'd be happy to show, but in the meantime, I can show you where it would be. There's a handicap right there, both at the rear of the building, accessing the bottom level, and at the front of the building, accessing the level above that. So this being the handicap spot is right next to the one rear, the other rear will travel along and in the front of the building, but we have to show that on the construction The fences, I already discussed, and the stormwater management, which our engineer says is acceptable and common, they've asked for some additional houses, which we're going to have to provide the stormwater. We're proposing one sewage pit, which will receive roof leaders from the building, the sewage pit is located in the rear of the property. And that's the only items I have on the left.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Paul, at this time. Commissioners, any questions for the architect?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gasson?
I have two questions. I have several questions. Let's start with the signs. What is permitted is one sign, right?
Yes.
And this application is proposed in two?
That's correct.
Why have two?
The, well, like I said, we can show you a little bit more detail on the architectural plans. The answer is that the main, there's two entrances to the building, one entrance on the side and one on the front. The architect wishes to sign both, but as I said, the architect is better equipped to answer that question.
I think one sign is enough, to be honest with you. And also, the size of, I have a problem with two signs. The size of the signs, what is the prevailing size?
Is six square feet, not prevailing, which is allowing.
Six square feet?
Yes.
That, that is proposing how many square feet?
20 square feet.
That's huge.
Well, like I said, well, you'll see on the plans, if you still feel that way, it's okay, but. But that's what's, that's what's coming.
I understand. The other question that I have is, I'm trying to understand how this, this existing structure, or the existing lot is being subdivided. The, the applicants, the south elevation of the project is the front entrance.
Is the, excuse me?
The south elevation of the project is the main entrance, am I correct?
The, yes, that's accurate.
Now, that south elevation is facing Westminster Avenue or Union Avenue?
The south elevation, being this elevation, is facing the neighboring lot. So a visitor would enter the driveway and come up to this door, which would be the main entrance to the building. Looking out of that door, you look onto this vacant lot here.
So actually, the south elevation, which is the main entrance, is not facing the main street?
Correct.
Which is?
Which is Westminster.
Which is Westminster.
Correct. Now, there is a door facing Westminster, based on the way they propose to use the building that would be next to it.
On the east elevation.
Yes, on the east elevation is the current front door of the building, which will still be out of the door. But as they propose to use the building, the main entrance for visitors would be on the side door.
So this building would only have, would only be facing sideways, Westminster Avenue, not Union Avenue, am I correct?
No, it doesn't face Union at all. You may go over here is the church, for its own reason. So I mean, by the time this is subdivided, this lot here would be much more like the existing lots on Westminster that just merely share a rear property line with properties facing Union.
So if the south elevation of the building, which is the main entrance, is facing?
The neighboring lot.
The neighboring lot.
Yes.
Then the ornamental fence would be installed where?
Should I, we'll start, we're proposing the ornamental fence. Starting at this patio line, which is even with the front of the building and approximately even with the neighboring building.
That's what elevation of the building?
This is, this is the east elevation. So it would start right here, it would run up to the Westminster property line, across Westminster. It would follow down the driveway, but it's still with the decorative fence. That'd be the gate that we're proposing to stop cars from coming past. Also a decorative fence. It would run all the way to the rear of the property line with the decorative fence. And then the vinyl fence would be here and along here, merely because this is just a driveway, not a drag.
Okay, that, that portion of the plastic fence, which elevation is that one, the north elevation?
The plastic fence would be along the north elevation.
North elevation. Okay, I'd feel more comfortable if you also, I, I don't want, I don't want anyone to see from Westminster Avenue that plastic fence. So you may want to install a fifteen-feet ornamental fence on the north elevation from Westminster Avenue. That's correct.
Right, we are proposing, and it's not on the plan, but I'm telling you right now, we're proposing to start from the patio, which is about twenty-five feet back, and go from, start the decorative fence there. So this, pretty much everything we can see from Westminster would be the decorative fence.
Okay, but should this board decide to propose this application? We need to nail that down.
Absolutely, and we can get that on the construction documents, and I'll tell you exactly what it will show. We'll start right at the patio, which is twenty-five feet off the property line.
Okay.
Commissioner, any additional questions?
If they have questions, the architect could.
Yes, that's our answer. Hi, I have a question. I tend to echo the thoughts of Commissioner Cashman. You know, we all know you're in a residential zone. You have a sign, actually, two signs that are excessive to what is required at that grade. I think you should reevaluate that.
I understand, but if I may, 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 fair enough to sign, you're actually building this on, so it would be shown.
Even still, you're a residential area, you should think twice about that. I, I'm not quite keen enough about that myself. It's received. I'd now like to pull on the Mark Park on sand.
Yeah, I have one more question. Uh, go ahead, you're on.
You'll have a chance to comment, Mr. Paul. Thank you.
Mr. President, please, Mr. Simon, where the testimony you're giving may be difficult. Please, you take your mic, just hold it in your hands. Would you state your name, spell your name, give your resume?
My name is V. I. C. E. N. T. S. D. M. S. D. M. S. D. P. D.
And your address?
My home address is two thirty-eighth St. Paul Street, West of New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect and professional planner, and I own the Business and Sensing Associates LLC on the twenty-seventh Earth.
This, this... Thank you. Now, I'm sorry, for the four plans, any objections to propose a twenty-one building, very clear.
I'd be happy to write about some words that I would like to put on the council to aid in this discussion.
Thank you. Yes. And just let us know if they're in position where you should, where everyone can see them, and if not, we'll either pass them around or throw them. Got this one.
One of the questions that was asked earlier, and I'm going to press that now, was where the original building is relative to what I'm about to...
Sorry, ma'am. Please, do you want to...
I'll be happy to do that.
Are you marking that, or...
This is exactly what I have accepted in color. So if you'd like to mark it, that's good.
Okay. On the R two, four, eight, two, uh, basically.
Thank you.
Four, eight, one.
Marked, yes. Which, uh, so this mark is a color of the elevations that you have drawn, SK five one and SK six one, except that the color data are identical to what you have in your package. I'd just like to talk a little bit about the building as it now stands. The current building is a one-story. It's a split-level building. In the front toward the street, it is one-story. In the rear, it is technically two, although the first floor is about two and a half feet below grade, but it's technically two stories. The building is, if you take a look at this elevation, the building is very low and presents essentially a one-story facade to the street, on a streetscape that is residential and largely three stories and higher. This building right now is brick. It's already been testified, it's in very poor condition. It's not happy built at the moment. And so what we're going to propose is to expand this building and take it from its current use, where the front of the building was a content offices, and the rear of the building was an assembly space on the first floor, and on the second floor, it was residential dormitories. We're going to change that. We are going to raise it, adding a story on both the front and the rear, which would make it technically a three-story building. And we are also going to add additions on the south side, a one-story addition on the south side to house a commercial kitchen. And we're also adding to the rear, a portion, that's a roof portion at the rear, to provide a covered ramp entry to the assembly spaces, to provide accessible use to that lower level. And we're also going to provide a ramp in the front, again, covered, to be able to provide accessible access to the main part of the building, reception area, this new living areas. One reason, and it's already addressed, one reason the main entrance is on the side is because we need that ramp to get in. The building is currently high. We need a rather long ramp, about two-thirds of the way back to the building, to the back of the, toward the back of the building, to reach the entry level of the first floor. I would actually like to talk about the plans first, and then I'll go to the elevations, but it's a good idea to talk about the plans. The first one, which you have, which is SK one, is merely the basement plan. That basement is under the front portion, the front half of the building rolling, under the current offices. The basement right now is in very bad condition. It has water, it has sewage lines running above grade. We are proposing to redirect those, those lines. We're going to lower the center. We will be making sure that we're doing everything we can to provide a controlled environment there, because we'd like to use it for storage, predominantly for foodstuffs that are distributed. So that is what we're seeing in this basement. And on the side of the building, the north side of the building, we are showing a walk coming along the side of the building. And then this little area right here, it says lift when you're drawing. That is actually to assist deliveries, that provide foodstuffs, to be able to get them into this lower level for storage.
And you said, you're referring to, this one's a massive version of all this?
This SK one is exactly what we have. We are also showing the stair access right next to the lift, and that stair access is to provide the stair access from that basement to the entry. SK two is also exactly what we have in your package. And on SK two, again, we have set the goal on the side that Westminster is on the right side of the street. The south side is at the bottom of the sheen, obviously, and the north side is at the top. The main current entry for this building is located in the front. It has a stairway that goes up into a relatively narrow vestibule, and we are keeping that vestibule. However, it's very important that we provide accessible entry to this building, to all those who are using it. And so we have provided a ramp going from the front. And you'll see as we talk about the signage of the canopy, how we're trying to make it obvious that that is the actual usable front entry to anyone who is coming, so that they would arrive and simply walk up the ramp and into the door. So that is visually, you can tell that the entry is on the front, but the actual door is on the side. There is a stairway on the side to get in that door as well. But what's addressing the street is that canopy leading up the ramp into the door. Once you walk into the door, the door that's on the south side that takes you into a reception area with waiting, it also has bathroom facilities and proofing showers on that floor, counseling service offices, and additionally, mostly offices and counseling in addition to the reception. There's also access to the offices, which I'll talk about in a minute. There's an open stairway leading from that reception area down to the lower area, which is in the rear. Now, if you recall, I said we have two accessible entries. There's also an accessible ramp entry in the rear, that anyone coming to function, to a meal, or something, could be coming in to reception. They also could be coming in the rear portion. And there is an elevator connecting the two. So there's an open stair access, and there is also a stair access. So this is working very well to limit the amount of space we need for circulation and maximize the space we have for the services that are being provided. That's why this is technically the first floor, even though it's a split. So the building's like this. So far, with the building, I've been discussing, all is in place already. Those were within the existing walls. So the existing building had that same lower first floor and raised first floor, the splits. When we go to the next floor, there is an existing second floor on the building at the rear. That existing building had dormitories. We are proposing to take that second floor and turn it into classroom space. And there's also two student bedroom areas at the rear. But this is largely classroom space. There's three classrooms, and you have ten to twelve students each. And there's also, once again, lavatory facilities on that level. There's also lavatory facilities on that level. That level is then connected. We are adding a new level in the front. So this is, this is technically the second floor all the way through, although the second floor in the front is higher than the second floor in the rear because of the split. So the second floor in the, in the front will house the offices, the, for the volunteers and the staff up here. And it will also have a contraband that will fit between fifteen and twenty people that are meeting. So once again, if people are needing assistance and they happen to have a classroom, a larger size, and one's available over here, the classroom would be held in a larger venue. Again, the park on the right side of your drawing is new, it's not there now. And then the last addition is over the rear, where we had the classroom, we're going to add the third floor. The third floor only covers the rear end of the building. And that third floor is going to provide intern housing, so that there's room for two interns. There's also a resident advisor who will be living on this floor. And there's now a lavatory, there's the bathroom facilities or showers, as there was on the first floor of the reception area. That's this level. So as you take the building, as I was just describing, right now, that building, the building when you look at it from Westminster, is very short, that's very low, so it appears to be planned. It's low, and again, this is in the neighborhood of multi-story residential buildings. Trying to keep it in that scale is actually a little better for that neighborhood than what term is there. So this is the front of the building. The front entry that's there now is right here. But this is not the, not the way we want the building to work. We want the entry to be in that central portion that's connected to the assembly space that's down in the rear, and is also connected to the counseling and the reception area in the first floor. So what we've done is we've created an entry, and we've placed a streetlight on one side, to climb to the side of this covered entry. And then faced the canopy with the sign that we've been talking about, that says, it's identifying this as the way to go. The streetlight, this is now becoming, it's still an entry, it's still being used for egress, but the accessible entry is on the left side of that front elevation, as you look at it. The elevation is down here at the bottom, is the south elevation. And the door that I was talking about, the ramp runs from the front undercover. So that once you get here, if it's raining, you're no longer getting wet. The ramp runs up along the side of the building to the entry that has the second sign right there. All the areas that show here as red is brick, as back to existing brick. We are keeping that in place. We are replacing all the windows. The windows in this building are not in good shape. So in addition to replacing all the mechanical equipment, plumbing, and the electrical, we will also be on this, in the existing part of the building. The windows will be all new. Of course, the black part of the building, which is new, the windows will be all new. And then, at the rear of the building, we have a ramp. And then, at the rear of the building, we have a ramp extending down to the rear and entering into the assembly space that I talked about on the plans. On the north side of the building, we have an addition, it's housing, the kitchen, chosen from the floor plans, as being on that north area, so we have a commercial kitchen that will be capable of serving the assembly area and preparing for those who may be taking it with them back to their families, but there will be a commercial kitchen there. And we also have a stored space that's connected to the building, so that we will have room to put lawn mowers, outdoor tools you need to maintain the facility. And this creates a nice layout of where we're going to put any exterior HVAC equipment, so that we can easily screen it. Any exterior heating, cooling, condensers, generators possibly, that the kind of equipment that you don't want to have steam from the street, from your neighbors. It will be screened, and it will be in this out. One of the questions that was asked was what materials and what colors are we using?
Second item, Mark, SK2, this is the rear, the right side. And then you were about to identify.
Set color board. So the existing building is a brick, and you will be seeing in the pictures when Landon was talking to you, you'll see the pictures of that brick, it's up against the building, it's
Sorry?
It's brick. It's a reddish brick, which we are maintaining. And then we're going to go to, the colors that we're showing are sort of natural colors, the gray-green. This light is coming up a little green, it's not quite that green, it's more of a gray-green. And the trim of the windows will be black, dark, as will the entry doors. The material that we're using throughout the siding is going to be hardy plank, with hardy plank trim. It's very, we can get a very good, it's a very durable product, very difficult to damage, and it's really durable. And that's it.
To the consultant, the question on the engine colors, question on the stability, pleasing on the side. And there was also some questions in which interior walls are existing or proposed. And I can just briefly address that.
I actually brought drawings I can either put into evidence or I can submit to the engineer, which clearly shows the existing, much easier than to show the existing. So this becomes, this group of drawings is going to become a four?
Yes, that's now addressing, this is what? A four crochet structure.
And I did bring examples, they did something we can hand out at one moment. You're not going to be able to see this too well, but I wrote it as a document.
Point is more forgivable.
Okay, and on this drawing, basically, I'm showing exactly what's existing, and what's been taken away. So from the basement, the basement drawing, as I showed you a bit, this is existing, although we are going to go to the current center. There is, and everything over here on this drawing is added. The next drawing down, which is the first floor, all the exterior, main exterior walls are existing, except for this portion to the north, which is added. The ramp to the south, which has been added, and the ramp to the west, sorry, west. This drawing also shows all partitions that are currently in the building that have been removed, and the location of new partitions. It's kind of hard to show that over here, so get it to trust me.
What you're marking is a four, clearly identifies and addresses item number one, showing which carrier walls are existing.
It does, and it shows it all on the floors. It's exactly the same thing I was just talking about, occurs again on the upper floors that we're talking about. You can tell what is added, so on this, on this second floor, the portion that had dormitory rooms is existing, and we are working inside. The portion to the front is new, and it houses offices. And then, again, the last piece, which is at the rear, will be added as a third floor. And the other thing in this document, which clearly demonstrates what's new and what's existing, there is a sheet of elevations, which clearly outlines the height of the existing building, limitations of the existing building, and the new building that's being proposed.
How so, so you're marking, I want to say the document?
I don't, yeah, I don't have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions from the architect? Commissioner Fernandez?
Mr. Fernandez, hi.
Hi.
Ben, I have a couple of questions, so I can understand and be better. I understand the answer is going to be an outreach, intern accommodations, and a complimentary ceiling.
That's correct.
So the intern accommodations, meaning that people are going to do?
There is on the third floor in the rear, you can, third floor in the rear, there are two intern bedrooms, there is a suite, meaning a bedroom, and a sort of student lounge for the resident director. Someone who lives there, or is that?
So the intern accommodations are referring to the staff, or?
No, no, the
Andy, I'll say that again.
The intern accommodation is that referring to the staff, or people that are going to be in there?
No, these are people who would be being assisted by the mission, and who are in training, or who are being counseled, and they're in a program for several months, and they would be working there.
Training, they don't have to be?
This is, I think this is probably better even by
Do you know what is part of the building, sort of form?
Not the floor, no, the total building area is listed on the front drawing, and it's about, it's close to ten thousand square feet.
That's a building, a whole?
Building, of course.
And a four-floor?
Three.
And the basement?
No, the basement's not a floor, so that does not include the basement.
So we're not carrying the basement?
Basement's not a storage, so we only record it, but it's considered a storage.
So what are we using the basement for?
It is being used for storage, it's not strictly storage.
So then we're using the
It will not be finished.
I'm sorry?
It's not finished.
Right, this part, that's what we need to have?
Yes.
So then you have the first and the second floor, and the third floor?
There's a third floor at the rear. The first floor in the rear is about two and a half feet below grade, and the front is about two and a half feet above grade. Because, again, it's a split. The second floor has that same split, and there's a second floor in the first, in the front and the rear, and then the third floor is only in the rear.
Okay, have you been able to calculate, calculating the permitted, a mile per person to the building? Is it moving by the four or five?
We have, it's listed on the drawings, we have, the one area that we're most concerned about would be the assembly space, that is an accessory assembly space, and it is under the limitations by code of how large that could be. This building is a B use, not an A use.
Do you think any of you should not ask?
The lower level, assembly space, that space itself is seven hundred and fifty square feet, it's actually seven hundred and forty-nine square feet, limitation that we can have by code is seven hundred and fifty. That's kind of technical, it's an accessory space, and that space can accommodate, I can't remember, I think it's forty-eight.
Have you calculated the occupancy for Westminster?
I've calculated in the egress, I can't, oh yes, for the assembly space, I think it's forty-eight.
Forty-eight people?
Yes.
My concern is that, this is, I mean, of course, I might have all this many people as well, but one of my concerns is that it seems that we have a building with so many uses that I'm really concerned with too many people in the building, let's say, right?
I'd like to address that, if you take a look at it.
Sorry?
Okay, I'm going to address that, how many people. The uppermost floor is the third floor, the start of the time. The third floor has two bedrooms, three bedrooms, actually, three bedrooms, and a student lounge. So if that's a living area, there's really only three bedrooms, and they're single bedrooms, they're not doubles. The level that's one down is classrooms, there's three classrooms. They have each, possible maximum they could hold is ten to twelve each. And there's two small student, intern bedrooms, those are really more like resting rooms. The remainder of the second floor is office staff, and I think Ms. Shat has already indicated how many paid staff they have, I think she said. So that, if you take a look at the plans, it's done quite there, I mean, it's an office space, it's not an assembly use at all. So you can tell how many people in there. The first floor is the reception area, and really is ancillary to the assembly space below. So if someone is arriving and needs help, they would come into that assembly space, there is a counselor, there's a counselor's office, so it's not going to be an assembly space, there's a counselor there. There is room for a few volunteers to be there, to again, to counsel people, and that's not really going to be a large crowd. You can counsel people on a big track.
Fun thing, they say that I have forty people at the assembly, like you said. Have people leaving those three bedrooms and the lounge on the third floor, and then I have people in the third floor?
I don't think the staff would be able to accommodate all those things one at once.
The staff would want to give you?
Yes, if there was a meal being served on the lower level, if there was a program in that, this is, again, there's handled by the, by Ms. Shat, because that goes to program.
Better mentioned by the
By the, by Ms. Shat, Karen Shat, who had testified earlier. But the building is, as it's set up, is assuming that there's meals being served or a program going forward in the assembly space, that the classroom space would not be in use, because the staff would be downstairs.
So they're doing one thing for the other.
Yes.
The kitchen, tell me about the kitchen, where is the kitchen?
The kitchen is located on the north side of the first floor, if you take a look. If you look at your drawing, SK2, the kitchen is top peak, from the north side, it's located way
Kitchen is dining?
No, kitchen, cooking, it's a commercial kitchen, as I think I indicated. The food pantry, don't distribute to you, so that the, some of the dry foods will be stored a lot better. The meals that we're talking about being prepared in this kitchen are going to be served here, but the space that's for services is not huge.
Serve, so you have
Well, they might be, again, I'm going to have Karen address it, but it would be possible, from this kitchen, to have like a buffet set up, where there would be, you could, you could fill your plate, you could go sit down. The other thing that would be possible is that you could come down the ramp into that area and get a cooked meal, to be able to take to where you live.
To take it outside?
Yeah, to go, I don't know if they're going to do that, but it's possible.
Well, you wasn't marking there, you have a kitchen, but there's no place to take that out of the menu? There's no beverage?
There is the assembly space that could be set up with tables. So that this assembly space that's next to the kitchen could be set up either with, if there were meals, there could be tables set up, and people could sit at the tables. Or if there were a program, not meals, you could have chairs in a row, and it's only, and in case of meals, you couldn't possibly sit forty people for a meal at tables that are you could do it, but it wouldn't be very comfortable. Forty-eight people would really sit for a program that you had, you were going to have people sitting for information appropriate, and a speaker.
And a speaker?
And that's the maximum. Well, yeah.
Forward this project is more for, I'm just a little concerned that, one, this is in a residential area, two, I think there's some issues on that building, are they going to be functioning?
I think this
Are they going to be functioning?
I think this building, I described it how it's going to be used, but basically, what we have in the front is offices, and in the back, we have a kitchen, an assembly, and then some, yeah, but we have some room for interns to organize a program, which are very low decks, it's a very low decks.
The training rooms, or the
There's three classrooms.
The cafeteria.
Right. That's not people?
People that go to the pantry.
Oh, the only people who would go to the pantry, again, Karen should address this, the only people who would go into the pantry are not people getting food, they are the staff.
The staff.
Or, yes, the pantry is not open to the general public at all, it's not finished.
Commissioners, any more questions from the architect? Could you please describe adjacent properties to the right and to the left of Westminster?
I can do that actually more easily, actually, you know, the next person to testify brought photographs, which actually, gradually look at the adjacent properties, and then any better one, and it is rather difficult to say.
I have one more question, details of the signs. Does this particular plan, when we look at these two signs, that's equal, ready? First scale, or second scale?
Yes.
Somehow, when I'm reading the script?
This one, Andy, wait, this one is twenty square feet, this one actually isn't a scale, it needs to be squished out. The thirteen feet was just, was small letters, I think, in those, it's just
Well, that's what I was reading, but what, this one, side view, this seems to be a lot bigger than the front.
Yeah, but this one should be one foot nine, I put ten feet wide.
Okay, do you have details?
This one's two feet high.
Do you have details?
I do, and this one, as you pointed out correctly, I'm sorry.
Say it again.
Okay, the, this sign has dimensions on it, and details on it. This sign doesn't, and I will
I can't see that far, but you please tell us what the dimensions are.
It's two feet high and ten feet wide.
So for the right, again, I see the sign, you please specify the dimensions.
This sign, from the, from this, sweep right to the end, this sign is ten feet and is two feet high.
Yeah, that's what we did, twenty feet.
Yes, this sign, this is actually a foundation on a roof, and this sign, I think that they would be very glad to provide corrected drawings on this sign, and we only wanted that one to be one foot nine, thirteen feet wide.
Yeah, I like the concept of the pole, I like, I'm very familiar with the side material. Other question? Okay.
Thomas, is there any other question, Commissioner?
The next question?
Before, actually, Ben, would you like our
I like that question a little more.
How it all works, I think that's
I just
We just go ahead and answer your questions.
Karen, Ms. Shat.
Ms. Karen, while you're doing here is great, no questions about it. My concern are safety, finding a balance with the residential area, before we do have people that we have to act to there. Can you talk to me a little bit about your typical day, how do you see your day, or your two days going on, this building where you have so many things going on?
Can I just back up on one of the things that you said, this area is a very high crime area. There's, the corner is a very problematic corner for the city, with high drug sales, prostitution, other issues. And then, really, what we're looking at, and I've been told by the mayor, he's looking at us to help clean up this area, the residential area, sorry, it's my turn. In order to understand the area, it's a lot of rude homes, it's people that are there in recovery. Um, it's multi-family homes and we'll see some of them that are multi apartment dwellings. Um, a lot of single rooms, people that we serve are ready, many of them live in this community. As far as workflow, what we're, we're not confusing all these spaces at one time. Um, if we have an activity within the assembly area, um, usually that's the primary thing going on. We might have a meeting where children are in the classroom, but we're not at the same time doing case management in the front portion of the building. The building has really been designed for people's safety with essential spend, um, pulling people off of the street. And I think John testified to that in a minute. But we're pulling people off of the street so that there aren't people hanging around the front of the building. That's why the building entrance is on the side. The, um, main entrance that is facing the street is left as an ingress, so there's a nice workflow. When people come into the reception area, they're working privately with the case manager, which currently the city doesn't allow that privacy. Everything that's been designed here is being designed to improve human dignity. Um, typically people treated as, I don't know if you've been by welfare lately, but they're lined up, zigzagged in front of the building waiting for services. We're in a time where there are a tremendous amount of people in need. And so the services like ours are doing the best we can to try to prevent this. Oftentimes, this may be the only food that people end up eating. So what we're doing is designing something that does not negatively, in fact, positively impacts the environment around. Negatively impact the environment, in fact, it positively impacts the environment. We're helping people that are right now walking the streets with substance abuse. We're helping them to get them into treatment. So it's having a real positive effect in the neighborhood. Typically, in the year, over a hundred people come through the mission and get placed in drug and alcohol rehab and detoxes. So this is a huge positive to an area that is, is very difficult and, and very, very traumatic. Constance, Daniel was here, and I think he can also testify what we're saying about that area. Um, it's also only one block off or one building off of Crown Bank and another number of other businesses. So this is not single family home residential. This is, you know, group homes difficulty area. Um, I don't know if I answered the questions about the usage of the building.
I think perhaps, uh, the building is going to be useful with your purposes.
It is.
If you do it right with the rate, if you're recruiting a bit of people there, I don't think that would.
Well, and that's why it's designed as is. That assembly area serves as a buffer during our normal operating hours. So if there are too many people that come from the pantry, they wait in the assembly hour. Most are waiting outside, down the street, zigzag lines, which many of the, the people providing social services in this economy are struggling with. So that's why it's designed to be.
So that's why we're, we're, I assure you, we're all of us are living in here. We don't matter here.
Stop.
Uh, thank you.
Your turn.
Commissioner, no questions.
I have another question. Ms. Ushak, you started off by giving the board a, uh, trying to sell us on the idea. And I think that most of the board members are already sold on the idea of having this where it is. Okay? But let me just go back. You yourself said that you live on Tom Don'tland, so you understand the Westminster area very well. And although the corner we're, we're talking about, which is, uh, Maggolian and Westminster, generally where Prince and Westminster is a icy area. But that is the gateway to Westminster.
Absolutely.
The gateway to one of the most prestigious areas in Elizabeth. So the, all the board members here, although they want to see something like this, they don't want a, a situation that can be brought about by not using the building in the correct fashion.
Absolutely.
Which brings me to just a couple of really quick questions. On Division Street between East Jersey and Livingston, there's a mission or a food pantry. On Prince, I believe there's another, or I believe there's also a food pantry just down the street from the round back. One of the things that I've noticed during the period of time where people come out there for treatment or whatever the case may be, is you see exactly what you mentioned in front of that welfare office, where people are zigzagged all across the sidewalk, sometimes in the middle of the street. Now, Westminster Avenue, that could be a pretty unsafe situation. Especially for people trying to get up and down Westminster on the sidewalk or for even for cars driving up and down. What mechanism do you have in place in order to have those people who are trying to get into your building not to create the same problem that's in front of welfare and that's in front of all these other food pantries and missions across the city of Elizabeth?
And, and I'm glad you asked that because that's exactly where the building is. Okay. I'm glad you asked that because the building is laid out sign based on the property to do just that. So that people literally will be pulled off the street instead of being lined up. Even there's security, everything is designed so that it pulls people to the, to the back of the property. And that's why the assembly area is so beautiful because it provides a holding area. So what we're doing is then rather than standing outside in the zigzag line and getting soaked and losing their human dignity, we're saying, come in and have a cup of coffee, Danish, while we're calling you and, and, you know, in your, in your receipt. But even if ever we were to fill that entire assembly, we're still pulling people completely off the street. The people that we serve, they don't have vehicles. We're not letting them car traffic. This is what, this keeps them safe. It keeps the people around us safe. It keeps the area picked up.
Perhaps you consider maybe this is just another way of possibly get people, get the traffic off the sidewalk. Consider maybe turning that ramp side, completely the other way around. Instead of people coming up the ramp from the sidewalk on Westminster and up into that door, turning it completely around where the ramp starts at the back of the building so that you have people coming all the way to the back of your property line in order to get people away from that sidewalk.
I'd like to address that.
Sorry, you can't switch perspectives. I'm going to back up. We all screwed up.
Okay. Um, the, the reason.
Was the question asked to this question?
Yes.
Um, what we're doing is by putting up the ramp there, we have a central flow within the property, many stand up. Is it okay to walk around with it?
If, if you feel more comfortable for, for the architect to answer that, I, I can, I can wait because I have another question for you regarding bedrooms.
What, what I, I don't know if this satisfies your opinion, you or not, but what we're looking at is this being the central hub. And, and this is at a different height than the front part of the building. So by bringing people back here, we're bringing them off the streets. Now, on busy days, they will continue to come here and in here, and this will become flowing to the building.
So they will be coming in from the back of the building?
Um, busy days, yes.
Okay. And do you have staff that you'll be bringing outside in order to get people off?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. And we also, yes.
Okay. My next question is, your plans show bedrooms where, I'm not sure exactly who testified to it, but that may stay for extended periods of time. When there you have clients that are coming in and sleeping in that building, will you have people on your staff in that building 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
First of all, we are not going to be a shelter. Okay, we have adequate shelters within Elizabeth. That's not what we're talking about. We are not taking someone straight off the street into those residential, uh, bedrooms. Those are people that will have been through treatment or they may even be interns that are learning what we do and how to do it and coming as really server, you know, help that's helping us. So these are not going to be people that are in their first stages of recovery. We're not going to be doing that. Those folks will be going away to other treatment, into long-term programs, like six-month programs if they're in that situation and need a residential environment. That's not what we're doing here.
My, my question still stands. If you have people sleeping on site.
Yes, we will have.
And staff.
Yes.
Will you have staff members in the building to make sure that these people aren't wandering all over the place?
Absolutely. That's why there's a resident assistant two-room apartment on the top floor.
Which leads me to my next question. Will the building be open 24 hours a day?
Yeah. The only people that will be in the building at that time will be the resident assistant and the assigned interns. There's actually a lot gained here that prevents people from coming to the back of the building during the day. That will be open in the evenings when functions are done. It'll be closed.
What are your hours of operation?
Right now, we're anticipating that they would be nine to five. Our current operating hours are more like ten to two, but we're expanding as more volunteers and people are available. But, and then there will be classroom, uh, classes, um, teaching people GRE, uh, how to get their G, G, I'm saying wrong. But their equivalency diploma might be in the evening. Our twelve-step recovery meeting might be in the evening. But at the time that those functions are done, which I anticipate to be never later than nine thirty, the front part of the building would be closed. The RE would be, um, staying on studying with, um, any interns that would be there.
So at any given time, you'll have adverties once that number in the building.
Absolutely.
At all times?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask also a question. When operation, operation, operating times are stated to different time periods, what is not to exceed nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Never exceed that at any given time?
I don't anticipate. I mean, worse case of, um, recovery meeting might leave, uh, while they end, the schedule's ended at nine, so I was giving a half an hour extra. So no, I don't anticipate there ever being beyond nine thirty.
Fair enough. Missions, any other questions?
Other questions? Those classes.
That was.
Those classes that you're on have, you're done before Monday, do you have people? What are the hours?
The classes primarily would be in the evening, although there may be some day classes. Most likely, there are like a class that might be on a Monday evening for six weeks or a Tuesday evening. We currently have the mission that was on Wednesday recovery, twelve-step recovery meeting. That means once a week. So those schedules will be based on the needs of the people that we serve.
I notice, I notice you didn't, didn't give them that, so for Monday.
Oh, um, the latest, I mean, typically, I mean, our volunteers want to get home. So, you know, we're, we're typically talking in the, um, six to seven start and then eight to nine finish. The nine thirty was given like a half an hour to make sure that we didn't get in trouble.
Missions, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm quite a little confused. She said there's, there's not, there's not, the bedrooms are not the shelter. So starting, the bedrooms that are on the third floor are not the shelters that work. What reason would they have to leave their stadium? They haven't, wasn't with or?
I'm not sure of your question. Why are people staying in the residence? Okay. In working with people, um, especially if they're in long-term recovery, they oftentimes will complete a six to one, six month to one-year treatment program. What often happens is people leave that apartment and then they come out and they come back to the streets and they fail. So if we're working with and mentoring a particular member, we might have them stay as an intern while they're working with us during the day and then they would have a safe place to reside in the evening. The other option that we may do ultimately, we'd like to see them literally move out into permanent apartments. And then that space would be used for interns from colleges that are learning how to help those in need.
Missions, any other questions?
I have a question for the architect. Mr. Chairman, can we take a few minutes?
I need to fire up the center.
I have a question, uh, for the architect in relation to, uh.
Ms. Ushak.
Yes. I have a question for the architect in relation to, uh, sprinkler system in the existing building and in the new building. And, uh, could you tell me something about if there is one and showing us?
Uh, if there is, if there was one, it is not functional now. Uh, there will be one in the new facility. It will be fully sprinkler built.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Missions, any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Silva.
It's not for the architect. Sorry. I'm just happy to talk about the situation. I don't understand the purpose of these people living there and who's watching them and if they're coming in and asking like, I just, I don't feel safe to look at everyone's head.
Silent people.
Karen Ushak. The people that primarily, it, it's people that are actually going to be volunteering at the mission in a capacity. Well, definitely that they are either volunteers out of colleges that are going to be coming for a week, two weeks, um, to help out with the mission and learn what we do. Or it's someone who's completed a recovery program to the place that they come on or as volunteers and, and are being mentored by our husband. Or, yeah. What happens in those situations is they're in a very strict environment where they are accountable for their behavior in every respect. This is not something that, um, just somebody's just coming off of the street and doing, as I said, I don't want to be sheltered. I want to help people become the person that they were created to be, and that requires accountability. So no, nobody's going to be wandering around the building or leaving the property. They're accountable for their behavior while they're there.
I got a question.
Commissioner, no questions.
Yeah, uh, I wonder if, uh, should there be kind of a security during the hours of our operations? It's going to be?
Do you want to know what the security procedures are during the normal day? The, the way the workflow is designed is that everyone coming into the building would be coming in prior through the main entrance, um, on the south side, right, the long entrance, um, through that one door. They would be then, there's a waiting area there. They would then go from that area to a case manager workstation. That case manager would be there, then they would leave literally on a different door, the front door of the building that's facing Westminster. Now, in the, um, the times when we are, have more people than, um, would be normal, those, then, and we want to use an assembly area as a, uh, an entry point, we will have a desk, uh, probably a portable desk that will sit there. People will register, have a seat, have a cup of coffee. No one will be allowed to wander through the building. And that's why the design is such a flow to be this is for the first floor that's up. It's fluid, but there's, there's staff there at every entrance.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, no questions.
Karen, what is it to be related to the type of function rates in regards to security? How are you going to contribute to the security in this area where we have so many problems already? Are you going to have security personnel, all the security? Are you going to have video cameras? Are you, what, what are you going to add to the outside of this building to make it a safer place than what it is now?
Well, first of all, the, the property is going to be gated. Um, and then I do believe that we are planning on video surveillance as well. And then I do believe that we are planning on video surveillance as well and the key points throughout the building, but the, there are gates. This is ten story here.
Ms. Karen, I-
I don't know, I mean, um-
I'm referring to the outside.
And that's what I'm, okay, if I take, there is a gate here that keeps people from going in the front of the property and there's, this is gated here and back. So the entire property, you can't get onto the property without going through a gate off-hours, during-hours. Like I said, the doors won't be manned. This door will be locked unless we're using it and we'll have someone there if we are not using it.
So you are planning to have video cameras facing the street, decide what?
Probably, I don't know the specific locations, but most likely at the entrances and then within the building.
And of course, we'll have plenty of legislation-
Oh, yeah.
-in front of the building which will add to the safety here.
I think Eric commented to the lighting within the site plan, that there are a number of lights. There's some on the building, some off the building, but all illuminating the entrances and ensuring. We want our staff and volunteers safe as well. I mean, this is, my responsibility is to keep everyone safe. We've been running the mission since 2009 in a street church before that. And we are very careful with keeping both our volunteers, our staff, and our guests very safe.
Thank you.
Missioners, any other questions?
Last question from Miss Karen.
Commissioner Bethless.
When you said that when someone comes to the building and they can have a seat and a cup of coffee, is it going to be for customers only or for, it's going to be public then?
The public is our customer.
Missioners-
We don't charge for anything, by the way. We don't charge for anything.
Next question, please. If I can now call upon John and my manager.
John, can you just follow me square? Because it does sound like you're giving me the [inaudible]. This is your address, please.
Hello, my name is John McAdams, and that's spelled M-C-C-H-A-D-O-N-O-G-H.
Your address?
My address is 101 North Drive in West Plankton, Jersey.
Mr. McAdams, would you please pass the private office board, would you agree to give your address from the board?
Yes, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of Eastwood. I also am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. I testified in that capacity before this tour on numerous occasions and hundreds of points here throughout-
We were just, thank God, it was received. Thank you very much. Mr. McAdams, you heard the testimony, support of the committee, and if you were planning that, there is supposed to be a [inaudible].
Yes, our analysis starts with what's on ground right now. We heard, talked about the character of the area. What I'd like to do, share with more of my observations with respect to the form of the neighborhood and the neighborhood itself, which is very important for the planning statement. We will now look at exhibit, which will be identified as A5. And as A5 is being, and that is actually comprised of three sheets. It will be handout size, eleven by seventeen, and all four sheets will contain four rooms. This is exhibit 10A. Assuming we all have exhibit A5, we will start with the first sheet, which is an area photograph that I downloaded from the big website. We like to use that website from a planning standpoint because not only does it show the layout of the neighborhood, but it also gives a worldview perspective that helps us get a sense of the mass and the scale of the buildings in the area. What we've done is outlined in the graphic, Russian PDL, which is presently in church complex. And we've also outlined in yellow the subject parcel, which would result as a part of the subdivision as associated with this application. So we identify the church on the top part of the photograph, which would be to the western end for orientation purposes. The north would be to the right of this particular photograph. And then it was the former comment that the applicant is looking to convert for a street like mission. Looking at the neighborhood itself again, we get a nice sense of the mixed character of the area, not only from the east standpoint, but also in terms of the form of the area. And we see a number of buildings varying in size, varying in shape. And of course, we do have some setback issues that which are triggered here by the prevailing nature of the neighborhood and of [inaudible]. But we are dealing with a neighborhood that is not pure residential. We've got institutional uses, we've got commercial uses, as I can work our way down to [inaudible]. And of course, as you heard, the prior minutes, a number of other different types of residential uses as we work our way along Westminster Avenue. Westminster concludes multifamily, single-family, two-family, and group homes as well. So we do have that aspect of residential on that street. Moving over next to ground photographs, which I hope, clearly recently, just so we get a sense of what's on the ground right now. The top two views are the subject site from the left side and the front side. And what's important from a planning standpoint as we look at frame number one, is that we have a site that is ideally suited for redevelopment and the type before you. The ground in frame number one is clear and flat, ideally suited for conversion to a parking lot, suit this building, which presently has no parking associated with it on this particular street scene. Frame number two, we now can apply from the prior frame, you get a sense of the look of the building, which in my opinion is more institutional looking than residential looking, certainly in comparison to what the applicant is putting before you now. From a planning standpoint, from a visual impact standpoint, certainly what the applicant is doing is bringing the site of the building more into harmony with the residential character of the neighborhood by introducing the pitch roof, second story, a larger building, which is more on scale with the buildings across the street and the buildings that have been more provided with damage. Neighborhood normally is certainly a key test in any area's application from a planning standpoint, in terms of what the applicant, the architect is doing here. That goal is certainly being met. Frames number three and four, and now hand over to the right side of the subject building. And what we see here again is that a monotonal to the building now, architect can is bring a visual interest into this aspect of the building. And we also see that there are notches in the building presently. What the applicant is looking to do is to square off a building here to more functionality. That will trigger a setback in variance and the notch that you see in frame number four of sticking out to the right is presently within the side yard setback. The applicant is looking to fill void by squaring off a building in front of that notch. Again, from a planning standpoint, that is not a substantially detrimental addition to the building, certainly not a substantially detrimental variance condition. And taking the picture itself speaks for that. Frame number five, six, seven, eight, we have a voting round of subject neighborhood, infirmity, the board members, that certainly is good knowledge of the character and the condition of the neighborhood. We do see evidence of light in this area, and some literate [inaudible] walks, significantly disinvesting and disrepair of the buildings. But from a master scale standpoint, again, there's variety of uses, a variety of mass. Frame number five, we're looking at the lanes to the west, which is the Magic Church grounds and is an office building. Frame number six, we're looking at the lanes immediately to the north, which are residential apartments that actually extend further back than the subject building will extend, which is important because the applicant is looking for variance to a rear yard setback as well based on the prevailing setback. And the adjacent building actually extends further back than the subject. Frame number seven, we're looking at a land use to the east, took this photo to show the value of the [inaudible] in the buildings in the neighborhood. And as we look at what the applicant is doing by pulling those upper stories on this particular building, certainly bringing the site more into harmony with what you see across the street. And then another thing we're playing in the area is frame number eight, where we see a vacant lot, a large vacant lot, that's certainly a dominant feature in the street state of this location. Now, your master plan talks about, I believe, neighborhoods like this, when it says, one of its key goals is to stabilize and improve residential neighborhoods that are threatened by deterioration in physical and economic climate. This application, this applicant is making a significant investment in this area, bringing the area up, presently in a damaged condition. And land use of this type has been found to be a catalyst for community growth by taking a vacant, deteriorated site and bringing back functional use, certainly a positive from the land use, has a ripple effect on the progress. So from a planning standpoint, that's another positive element to the application. In terms of applying this to the zone plan and the ordinance and your master plan, we're looking at a parcel as we look at site and totality, including the church grounds. There's actually a split zone, we've got three zones in this area. The R1 single-family zone, the R3 multifamily zone, and then the C3 central commercial zone. The one zone that's most important here is the R3, because that is the zone that is already included in Westminster Avenue and the street scene. And that's where both the variance are, our variances are that are associated with this application. In terms of the paramount relief, we're looking for a D variance to allow this outreach facility as not committed in a residential district. And we're also looking for six ancillary or interrelated C variances, two related to setbacks. The rear yard that I mentioned have a setback of 144 feet versus, I'll try to get it, 144.9 feet versus 80.6 feet allowed by the ordinance based on prevailing setback. A side yard setback of 8.7 feet required, 6.2 feet proposed, again, that's just a continuation of the line that's there presently. We've got a parking variance to allow for level spaces, which will be the actual demand of this facility, given in testimony of prior notice that there will be only four employees here at any one given time and then 15 volunteers will never appear at the same time. The typical actual demand of this property would be six or seven parking spaces at any one given time. We have a surplus of 11. The strict or literal ordinance requirement would be 27 parking spaces, so we need a variance there. And then we have a variance to allow for the fence to be 6 feet high in front of the property. And you can see good [inaudible] as we do have a chain link fence in front of the property presently that will be replaced by a decorative building. So that serves not only a functional benefit, but an aesthetic benefit as well by going for that to be for variance. And then the last two variances related to signage and for the board members concerned about signage. Variants that were one related to signage, quantity, have two signs versus one. The plan justification, of course, is that we're trying to identify two things. One, we're trying to identify the site from the street. And secondly, the entryway, which is actually on the side of the building. So we've got two significant points of entry here that are called for wayfinding purposes to have that signage on the property. Bearing in mind, of course, that clientele and what I'll call the guests of this facility is Elizabeth's sector, they are drawing population from here in Elizabeth as their primary customer base. People need to find this mission and there needs to be identifiers associated with the building. In terms of the scale of those signs, the ordinance allows for a sign at six square feet. That's the size of that border. One of those borders that are on the easel right now are standard two feet by three feet. Relatively modest, given context and the mass and scale of the neighborhood. What the applicant is looking to do with one of the signs, as you heard, 12 square feet, would be double what you see. So the panels that you see side by side there would be evidence of one of the signs. Take another royal panel and that would be the second sign. So again, given the context of the building, relatively larger building, the mass and scale of that signage within the context of that building will certainly blend in and not be overbearable in the context of a residential neighborhood. Those are the variances. In terms of the statutory proof, the most important, of course, relates to the use variance. To satisfy the use variance in dealing with this use in a residential district, we have to satisfy the usual positive and negative criteria. On the positive side, we're going to act upon there all the special reasons and all the particular suitability requirements that relate to the need and why this facility is needed at this location as opposed to all the other blocks that you have here in our resident. We don't have to do that with this application. We're dealing with a form of land use that is identified by our courts as inherently beneficial. And what that means is that out of all the thousands of land uses that one could do on a particular piece of property, our courts have boiled down to about six or so land uses that are of such importance, they consider creative prop and they deserve special treatment. The positive criteria automatically satisfied are courts tell us, when dealing with a inherently beneficial use, and that would apply to uses such as churches, such as schools, such as hospitals and the like. This falls within that category as a supportive service and transitional housing project. So my testimony has effectively cut in half, being that positive criteria and the weight on the positive side is significant with this application. So our focus is on the negative criteria and the harm that issues to the neighborhood and to your zone plan and ordinance. We've been spending a few hours now talking about those negative aspects, and I think the board has given this application a good shrug, if you will, in terms of the impacts on public health, public safety, and on the character of the area. What I'd like to do is run through a couple of those as I go through my planning analysis. In terms of some of the negative effects with respect to public safety, the applicant is addressing some of the respect to security, with respect to fire issues and bioprotection. In terms of traffic, we know this is a pedestrian-oriented, improper facility, it should be low traffic generators, secondhand employees, very low [inaudible] generator. So I believe public safety is addressed by the applicant for you. Public health, this is going to be a clean, needful facility. Sanitation, hygiene, refuse pollution, all those types of issues are also not substantially detrimental. We look next at the impact on our public welfare, issues in the [inaudible] such as blares, such as visual impact. From the visual standpoint, I fall back on visuals before you, that this will again bring the site more into harmony with what's around it. Those are the paramount negative effects that can be associated from a neighborhood impact on the [inaudible]. In terms of the zone plan, issues pinned to some of the other things for multifamily uses that we may see in the area, nurse rooming house, nursing home, those type of facilities or homes for the developmentally disabled could actually be located at this particular parcel with the ordinance that reflects a residential character, again, which is what the applicant is mentioning here. So to find and [inaudible] statutory test, of course, tell us, you can answer four questions. We'll look through the one, two, three, and four. Number one is to identify [inaudible] as a state, certainly that is the commission of specialized housing care for the most needed, your community, homeless, impoverished, regular substance users, giving them the basic needs to return to a dignified life as a [inaudible]. Also, the public interest is the efficient use of land, this is the natural reuse of a building that is underutilized presently, not serving any other benefit. And falling back on the testimony of the engineer, we'll have improved street scene here, a refit system with 60-plus plans on the property, bringing in color development into this, well, all improved quality of the street scene. All of those go towards the public interest. The second part is [inaudible] of the negative effects, which I just ran through. The third part is to show you that balance and see if there's anything that can be done to mitigate those negative effects on the neighborhood. Talk about the last statement, we talked about rehabbing a building that was leaking and again, this is going to be a million dollar, multi-million dollar investment- And again, this is going to be a million-dollar, ultimately million-dollar investment in a building which translates to investment in a community, a community or an area of a community that is suffering from significant disinvestment. Again, it plays an important formality in residential character when you provide for the building. Those are the first three questions. And then the fourth part, which is what the court needs to do, is balance the benefits of this application against the negatives. And of course, tell us that there are significant weight on the positive side. And as we run down this application, I say it should be low weight on the negative side. So towards the use variance application, I believe the statutory criteria are overwhelmingly met at this particular location, in this particular neighborhood, this type of facility. Finally, just to run down the both variances very quickly. We have a rear yard setback, 144.9 feet versus the 80.6, which is less deep than the building immediately adjacent to it. So I don't see anything about that setback as making a stew with surrounding properties. Side yard setback, we talked about the filling of the notch, and I have absolutely no detriment on the neighborhood as well. Parking, level spaces versus 27, dealt with that as well, making the actual demand. Talked about the fence, 6 feet versus 30 feet. And again, the justifications to the sign as being necessary for clear and safe implementation of the property. Also, I believe the statutory criteria for the use elements met, and for those six, both variances were also met. Our courts tell us that we will leave these both variances, consider the application as a whole. And as a whole, this is nothing but a very, very good application for your community and will certainly be an asset to the neighborhood and everything else around it.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. I thought that was enough. Commissioners, any questions?
Measure measure. For two minutes, I need just an engineer to clarify the discrepancy.
I'm sorry.
I need to ask an engineer to clarify the discrepancy that appears between his testimony and the comments of our planner that are more related to the fence. I just want both of us to be on the same page, if that helps, or we don't have any misunderstanding.
Would you say you can? Eric, oh, yeah, I'm in. Do you?
Okay, very clear. You indicated during your testimony that the ornamental fence would be along the west elevation, which is actually facing Westminster Avenue. Am I correct?
No, actually, it's the east elevation facing Westminster Avenue.
Sorry, the east elevation, you're absolutely right. The east elevation faces Westminster Avenue.
The east elevation faces Westminster Avenue and?
Westminster Avenue.
And will be of the ornamental fence variety.
The south elevation is the main entrance.
The south elevation will also be a protective fence.
Are the corrective fence towards the right?
The vinyl fence would be at the rear of the property, which is the western end. And at the north of the property, with the exception of the approximately 25 feet between the patio and the street line, which would be different.
Okay, because point number six of our planner's comments contradict that. I just want to make sure that we're going to abide to your testimony and not the comments.
Well, the plans before we made some changes during testimony tonight were different than what I'm describing, but exactly as I'm describing, it will be shown on the construction.
Okay, just one more question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Galeran, have you had any satisfaction with your variance, or are there some certain variances? And question two is, if we'd like to know your view on this application.
Yeah, applicant has indicated that some of our statements are mentioned. We really hope he has a couple of comments, I think, to address, one of them being the accessible ground, the handys parking space, some modifications to the management aspect. So if we're willing to do those two items, then we're satisfied with the requirements that we're looking for.
Commissioners, any questions before I call the other ones?
I still have a question regarding the current.
Commissioner Nance.
As one of my colleagues pointed out before, can you use some of the words of our planner?
Yes.
The people that are going to be serviced by this building are going to be the poor and poverty-stricken. These are going to be the people that are going to be walking in off the street. And to have two signs, I think, may be a little bit overkill. I think the idea for this building is to, although it is beautiful, to make it subtle. And I think having two large signs, the way that we've got it laid out here for us, is a little bit too much for the area. The people that are going to be walking in off the street aren't going to be, you know, running past at 50 miles an hour, they're going to be walking in, see this sign very, very well. And word of mass is going to get around, everybody's going to know, that needs to know where this place is. I mean, the beauty of the building in and of itself would be, I think, more than enough to attract attention of local people and anybody else here. But I think we need to address this issue of the sign before we allow this to move forward, because as one of my fellow commissioners grew up, the signs were a little excessive.
The only other response that I'll look at about, again, just to bring? Sorry, you're testifying now? I thought I was a question, but I'm not sure.
I don't know, because this is the witness. I have pointed out the question to whomever had, yes, he is the, I had pointed the question to him, yes.
Please don't forget.
Maybe, maybe she'll have the attorney, maybe if you would like. Break up who you think should address this.
Whoa, 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 this is what I'm trying to avoid, is everybody jumping in. One person at a time.
This, please come forward.
Let me say something very quickly, Mr. Compton. Me understand the purpose of a sign. I don't want to be explaining to him what is the purpose of a sign. I understand that. The size of the sign is not consistent with what the city provides. And two signs to me are not acceptable. Here it is.
Yes. Karen Nieschek, right? You're very right. People are going to know where we're at. They're looking for help. They know where help comes. We can take it down to one sign. I think the real question in my mind would be whether the sign is better facing Westminster or in front of the building. If we can leave that for later on to figure out. I have to tell you now.
Just for a moment, just for a moment, and this is only my opinion. There is an empty lot to the left of this building, which is immediately in front of your main entrance. Eventually, from what I understand, there's going to be some construction there. If you do leave a sign on that side of the building, and they put up, let's just say a supermarket, let's just say, no one's going to be able to see it.
Right.
I think that in your high-traffic area, let's just say, there is somebody that doesn't know where your building is, walking down Westminster Avenue. If it's on the front of the building, on Westminster Avenue, even though that's not your main entrance, probably the, that would probably be the best idea, but it's only my opinion.
Yeah, let's go with it. Will we agree to place one sign only on the Westminster Street?
Within the guidelines of what the city allows for the size of the sign?
60, that's pretty small. I mean, we'd like to see it be a little bit larger to be able to, I mean, I mean.
Six, I, Mr. Galeran, what is the, what are the limitations of signing?
Yeah, well, six square feet residential zone, if you're in a commercial zone, we'll hold 80% on the building weight. So now this is a residential zone, pushing, you want to hold on to six square feet or?
What, what do you mean large?
We are proposing something that's two by 10.
Sorry, excuse me, what did you say? I asked, what is they proposing for that front of the building?
Two feet, which is not even those two boards, and 10 feet, which is, I believe it's the width of the two boards together.
Now, on your billboard there, is that a sign of the sign that's on the side of the building? Or is it on the next to the blue street line?
It's accurately drawn of the front of the building, correct, Barbara? Yeah.
Now, if we say the front, we're talking about the long, the lower of the two pictures or the top of the two pictures?
The top of the two pictures. So it's well below, not even half of what.
So that's the smaller of the two signs?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I choose the larger this is. The front hanging off the light bulbs, the larger 20 square foot. The one on the side mounted on the building entrance is 13 and change, I think.
Right, but it's pictured wrong, so.
All right, so we're not, it's not to scale as you had right about. Okay, all right, good. So we're going with the smaller of the two signs?
We're going with the two, what, based on the drawing appears to be.
No, no, it does.
Okay. No, we're going with the larger, we're going two by 10 feet.
And was it smaller one side?
One by 13, which lends itself to the space that's available, where the two by 10 lends itself to the spaces pictured on the Westminster drawing.
Okay. So you're proposing two by 10?
Yes, two by 10.
Against a 20 square foot?
Yes.
I'm okay with if my fellow board member recalls something.
I'm okay with it. As far as this one side, one side, two by 10.
Last question.
Commissioners, so.
Is Darren right in this answer?
Yes.
Is this going to be on all night long?
The street light itself is no bigger than the streetlight. A streetlight they can find on the street. Is there, the sign itself does have lighting, but not such that it would be?
Because there's buildings across the border, so we want it to be super.
Yeah, do you want the light to go off? Because the, so, I mean, that's fine, we can turn it off.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So the sign will be shut off after?
Why don't you close?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any other questions? Are there any individuals in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, and state your name and address of the venue.
You have to go up. Up here, please. Your age, your ID, could you sign me square, the testimony you're giving, hopefully cannot be found through. Have a seat, take the microphone in your hand. Hold on this minute. Use this directly and do it. State your name.
I'm also naming your address. My name is Jose Vazquez. I live in 6072 Grove, in the neighborhood. I am.
What's your name?
Jose Vazquez, G O S T. And the surname is V A Z U U E C.
Thank you.
Okay, I live on from 426 to where we live today, and from 540 to where we live today. All right? Then right now, I have a post in the park. I keep attention to the paper, people on the park, or the place, or I'm sorry. This is the I, I'm like, give you here. I went again, again, I have a process, because we can correct the people. Okay. And you know, crossing the street, line of people, go up and down, up and down. See, in the front of the same walk. Go, sit like this, and then sit down. Call the police, police coming, rest in hand, taking the pass, land, listen, and like again, good people. And, you know, right now, if you build in this house, are more dead people coming in, because you go above more people, you build a house. Go above and down more people, robbers. The children are coming out, the robbers who rob us. Because right now, if you have a park on property, about two days. And right now, we got about four, five hands, the asking me, come to the park, because I got a lot of fans in this neighborhood. So I'm considering, would be there, maybe this building, where we live there, from the others, from here. I like to have the people, like us, building the other place, when we have the rest of this. Because mainly basically, who like to live, we throw the sacks. Do you like to live here? Do you like to live there? And this is no matter. Then because these people, like, you know, more aggressive than the other people, as people who are like to work. These people drop, rob us, and everything. They go start on the night, screaming, they go start dropping, they go start to drop. So no matter what, the people, the good people, they go, they are short, man, of course. Then come in more dead people, more people, go be more rough, the police, for the, for the city of the neighborhood. For everyone, why do we leave them to the place, where more residents are? Okay, and this is what I tell, I tell everybody here, people like to live here, from this building. Okay, they like to live with this building. Tell them, yes, okay, people, people don't like, these people, people don't like it, too. Tell them, okay, not because they're right, they don't like these people, because the people often be one day. I don't extremely, you know, I must tell nothing, because I hope many times, enough, you can kill you. Then if you consider it, I tell them, we're supposed to build it to the side. It's maybe building a nice building for good people, everything. And the other people, building the other place.
Thank you, Commissioners of the Park. I guess I can ask. Commissioners, any questions from Mr. Zaza Viva?
Actually, yes.
Commissioners.
What was your name, sir, I'm sorry? My name is Jose Vazquez. No, no, that's okay. You own the building directly next door to this property, yeah? And right, the people, you know, seeing the front of the church, they go in the back, or in the middle. They go make a lot, you know, make what? You know, 60, 100. Yes, in the car, yeah, they go to, 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 okay, the road sign come. Despite that, I got lining and this apartment, I can, I don't think you're afraid of the park. Because people don't like to buy. Because I got the nation, from the nation, to that, you know, that is consideration. You need the consideration of the people, that the good people living in the weather is enough. Because I got the people, I know, because they got the, the state, they got the, people, they share the money or the house. They got a room and house, and that the people, they like the color, people bring up, bring up, sell the color. And car from New York, I see car from New York coming, and sell the roses in the car. Pass the road on the street. We should, the people who are working, you know, I like, I consideration for what? I, I repeat again, people like to live between these people and from these people, that. Yes, people don't like to live with these people and from the new, tell them. Because if you live in the one family, have a, you like the people, build one house, this is the people for new house. And has, of course, you have to like this. All right, you don't like this, do I do like it, do the here, because you don't read the here, this is what I.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, any other members in the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, one at a time, state your name and address of the venue.